Today we're on. Yes, today.
Time is now 6:15. We will call this meeting to order.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Creator of all, we join together tonight in thankfulness for all you have given us. We thank you for another opportunity to serve this community. Please grant us all wisdom, understanding, perspective, and patience as we work through this budget presentation. We ask for your continued protection and grace over our community, our council and staff, our first responders, and our leaders. We pray this through your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
Okay, appears we have one council member out today, Mr. Johnson. Everyone else is present? We shall carry on. Do we have any public comments today? I don't think we do. Okay. Now. We have a nice presentation. 2024 Budget Workshop, and here we go.
All right. My most favorite time of year. Ooh, yeah, yeah. Okay, you can go on to the next one. So I just have everybody listed here. The budget is a group effort. We want, the reason we have this workshop is to get input from all of you. Staff's been working together since, as Eric said, March, to pull us together. And so tonight we'll be giving you a very preliminary look at the budget. We can't finalize it yet, but that's what we're going to look at. So this is how the evening will go. Overview, budget approach, the calendar, and then we'll talk about general fund and enterprise fund. Those are the two we'll focus on tonight. So business accounting, as many of you know, you set a budget to spend money to, to get the most revenue back, whereas with government, it's kind of backwards. You set a budget with what you project will be your revenues and what you're allowed to take in as revenues, and then you try to provide services based on what you can spend out of that. So it's a little backwards. We set a tax rate to bring in our needed revenue, but that is, it's limited by state, how much we can bring in. And, you know, government, the state set a limit of three and a half percent increase every year for us so that cities couldn't go crazy, or taxing bodies couldn't go crazy with their, their revenue. But this year with inflation, it's, it's been a tough year. So we're going to talk about that a little bit. And we began the budget process in April. The department heads were all given a spreadsheet with their section of the budget, and they were told to work through it and determine what their needs would be for the coming year. And then while they were doing that, I was going through things like utilities and payroll and all those fun things to determine our needs for that. We've met again with each director to go over their requests, and then we met one more time to make some more cuts. So we're going to go through this, and again, I remind you, this is just very preliminary. So what we want to do as we go through this process, so we want to maintain the basic services that our city should provide. We also want to look at the future of Richwood, make sure that we aren't just living today. We need to look at the future and what that holds. This budget that I'm going to show you tonight is very bare bones. It is probably, not probably, it is the tightest budget that I have presented since I've been here. This is my fourth budget here. And so we have, like I said, we did a second round going through to cut. One thing it does include is a 5% pay increase for staff. We always base our COLAs, which are done annually, on social security. They're, they're projected COLA, which is 8.7% this year. We're only doing five, but then staff has an opportunity to get up to 3% additional on merit. We did evaluations every year, but every other year we give merit increases. So this is that year. So then I go through and I look at our revenue, and we are limited to, we can only bring in three and a half percent more revenue this year than we did last year on existing properties. That doesn't count new construction, but on the properties that were taxed last year, we can only bring in 3.5% more. I'm sure you all heard how Brazoria County raised everybody's property up like 10%, and people were just up in arms. And, you know, they think the cities are just going to rake in, but we can't. So even though assessed values went up 10% or so, we can only take in three and a half percent more, although inflation is higher than three and a half. So prior years, that three and a half percent wasn't a problem because inflation was lower than that, and so we could, it was fine. But when you have almost double-digit inflation, and, but we can only raise revenue three and a half percent, it makes for a tight budget. And then, the next one. So we, we continue to try to improve our services, do things that we can to look at, at providing these services as affordably as we can and efficiently as we can. And then we have some options. I have done some deep diving this year at things that I want council to look at and recommend for us, how you'd like us to act. So, okay. So the next page is just the budget calendar so that you're aware going forward what we'll be doing. Some of these dates are set by law, and so we have to adopt our budget on September 11th. If we don't, well, we will. We'll be here all night, but we will. We have to have the adopted tax rate to the county no later than September 20th. If we miss those deadlines, and the county has to send out assessment notices for tax rates late because we've missed those deadlines, it's at our expense. So we don't want to do that. So anyway. The next page is just kind of a snapshot of all of our funds that we budget at their revenue, and it compares going back to '21. And then I have the actual through '630, which was the last closed, closed month, and then what we're proposing. So, and that's for each fund. Okay, the next page. As I mentioned, we're limited to three and a half percent increase in our revenue. When assessed values go up as much as they have, that means that our tax rate is going to go down. We will get absolute calculus, calculations from the county later this month, but I go through and I do my best to estimate. So this is by no means what I'm going to tell you is going to be the tax rate, but it's, it's a good, I have to have something to base the budget on. So I'm guessing we're going to go down about seven, eight cents per hundred on our tax rate. Now, that's just a portion of everybody's tax rate, just the Richwood part, but, and our debt will go down also. The debt is what is required to assess on the properties, to bring in enough revenue to cover our debt obligations that are not paid by the enterprise fund. So we have a debt fund, and I send the county what we're going to need for our principal and interest payments, and then they calculate that. Again, I calculated it on my own little thing, but it could be a little different. We received assessed values in April, and again, those are preliminary from the assessor. They, they hold a meeting. We had gone up 20-some percent, Eric, in assessed values. There were some communities in Brazoria County that had gone up over 50% in their assessed values. That's due not only to existing properties, but new construction. But so our assessed values overall, that they're estimating after deductions and things, is 478, 478 million. It's, a little chart shows with what I'm predicting will be our tax rate, it's going down. It'll be lower than it's been since before '18. So that's good news. Okay, the next slide. Sales tax. It was getting close to about 25% of our revenue, but it has been taking a dive this year. And so it's probably closer to 22% to 23% of our expected revenue. I think all communities are seeing this. A lot of communities, it puts them at a worse situation because they're more dependent on sales taxes, for good or bad. We're not as dependent on sales taxes, but there's still a good chunk of our revenue. And so since I did this chart, I received the next month, and it's following the same trend. It's, it's more than last month, but still lower than last year. We received 70,504 for general fund and transportation fund and 13,673 for CCPD. So, so they continue to go down. So because of that, I have budgeted with a lower amount expected from sales tax. It could come back, but I have to budget based on what it looks like right now. Now, when I, when I show these figures, that is the total for transportation fund and general fund. When the money comes into our account, 20% of it gets posted to transportation and 80% gets posted to general fund. And then the CCPD comes in its own deposit, and it goes right there. They each get a half cent. Any questions so far? Okay, the next one. This one actually surprised me as I was going through. Our building permit revenue is, through the end of June, is only at $30,000, $31,000, about not even half what we projected for this year. With interest rates so high, people aren't building. So our building permits are down. So, so I had to drop that down for this coming year also. I'd budgeted 82,000 last year and budgeting 45 this year. And again, it could change, but, okay. So the next page is our general fund. It's our revenues broken down by category, what I'm projecting versus historical.
They won't look at this sheet?
Oh, yes. I did give you all a budget from the system, and that's more detailed. But in the presentation, I just have it summarized, but you're welcome to look this is line by line. So some of the notes, and I've touched on them already, for the property taxes, that includes delinquent and penalties and interest, as well as, as the current year ad valorem taxes. And I base those on that tax rate that I calculated based on the appraised values they gave us in April. Again, sales tax revenues declined, and so I've reduced my projection for that. And building permits are tracking low as well. So I've reduced that. Any questions? Go to the next slide. This is the expenditures for general fund by department, and some notes on the police department. CCPD will be having a transfer of 25,000 come into general fund to cover some of their overtime. That doesn't show on the expenditure line because I have to match the expenditure line to our payroll reports, but it, it'll show as a transfer into the general fund. It does not reduce, though, the expense line. And also, one thing that's not included in the budget, but could be a, a major expenditure, we've applied for a post-fire grant, and council voted several months ago that we would apply for this grant. And if awarded, we would have to do a match of 25% to get the grant. And so that would be 122,000 that we would have to spend. That can come from general fund, fund balance. Also, it could come from contingency, but it's just, I wanted to make a note of that, that it is not included in the budget at this point because we don't know if we'll even get it. Okay. So as you can see on that same slide, our revenues have increased by about 44,000, but our expenditures have increased 103,000, and that's with cutting to the bone. But now I'm going to go through and explain to you why expenditures went up. So our insurance in June, we always have to redo our windstorm insurance. It's called named storm. In fiscal year '22, we paid $60,000 for that windstorm policy. This year it was 117. We only had two companies bid on it. We go through a broker. He tried many. We had two bids and 117, so it increased 94%. That pretty much eats up our additional revenue right there. And so for fiscal year '24, I could throw a dart at the wall and guess what it's going to go up. So I have budgeted 20% increase. I could be over-budgeting, but I could be grossly under-budgeting. I have no idea.
Then that will happen.
Yeah.
This summer?
Yeah. Our general liability.
Quick note on that. Council, our broker advised us that the, the two respondents this year, one of them already told him that they will not be rebidding again next year. So it'll be down to one. I believe that's AMRIS and...
Tweed?
Yeah. And so there'll only be two, and that's, that's it.
Most of the windstorm companies are just, it's going to come down to be tweed, yeah. That's eventually who it's all going to be.
So our liability and our auto policies, they're on the same fiscal year as we are, but I have not, we don't get those bids yet until closer. So the, by the time we approve the budget, we may know firm figures, but right now I plugged in a 20% increase. As I mentioned earlier, personnel, we've increased pay. We've proposed increased pay by 5% for the COLA, and then up to 3% based on their evaluations, using social security as a guideline. And of the cost for payroll, we have that 25,000 transfer coming in from CCPD. And then our employee benefits, our health insurance, we go through TML. Last year, we got some different bids, but nothing was even close. Wasn't it last year? Anyway. But this year, to maintain the same coverage that we have, which isn't like a Cadillac plan, but it's a, a good plan, it went up from 83747 per employee to 96789. And so that's $1,565 per employee for the year. So that was a sizable increase also. That is divided not, it's not just general fund. We do have three employees in the enterprise fund, but, and then we have a 380 agreement. Fiscal year '24 is the last year for this agreement with Crawford's. It is up to Crawford's to contact us and claim reimbursement. It's written right in the contract. They have not claimed it since 2018. So every year I budget for it, but they don't claim it.
Is there a time limit?
Yeah, it has to, and it's on the agreement. I have, I think they have to do it by the end of the fiscal year.
For each fiscal year's reimbursement?
Yeah, so they couldn't come back and say, we want to collect 19 through 23.
Perfect.
So that, the last year will be '24. It's 100% of their Richwood property tax, and it's about 12,000 this year. And then code enforcement, this will be the first year with it fully funded, fully year budgeted. Last year was kind of a shot in the dark. We didn't know what he would need. You know, we had the salary in there and like a couple thousand for odds and ends, but we didn't really know. So we have that in there this year. And then I also reduced another expenditure line for BBG, who is our inspection company, because Marcus does all the rental properties now. So saved us about $8,000 right there, or, you know, helped pay for him.
Do we know what the returns are for having the code enforcement officer? What is the revenue we're seeing?
We aren't really seeing revenue.
Well, they have lots of compliance, though.
He's, he's, at this point, I think he's more, how do I word it? He's making sure there's compliance. He's not running into people that are refusing to comply.
He's not had to issue suspension.
Yeah. So, but he, he keeps busy, and so.
We're trying to, but council, we're trying to segue into some other duties, but those duties cross into some other health and safety fields that the fire department that we contract for, for that. So we're, we're trying to get him into those as well to where we have that on staff right now. We contract that out. So we're, we're trying to segue even more into that.
Would reduce more of our expenditures.
Okay.
Okay, so the next page, or next screen is our ambulance service. In the little chart there, you can see how it's gone up since 2018. We contract with CLUT. I was, I was misinformed or misunderstood or something. I thought we covered 100% of the cost for ambulance to the residents, and they didn't get billed at all. So I talked to CLUT EMS Director earlier, I guess it wouldn't be earlier this week because it's Monday, but last week, and they do bill insurance or Medicare. They just do not aggressively bill. So if somebody calls the ambulance and, and their insurance only pays a portion of it, that's what's collected, is that portion. Or if they don't have insurance, nothing's collected. So then we assess the charges based on our calls, our call volume, correct? Am I saying that right?
We're not paying the difference, but we're not, we're paying for what it costs for them to run the call, but not necessarily the difference of the bill.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, they're not making money on us. We're covering what it costs them to, to cover.
Break even, essentially.
Yeah. So I thought, you know, okay, we just start billing it, and it's a whole big revenue line, but I was wrong. So I asked them what they do. And so CLUT has a 450 voluntary donation on their utility bills, and they also do Freeport, and they said Freeport does a $2.50 voluntary. So that's something we can look at, but I don't have it built in at all. So right now, that 468 is in the budget with no revenue to offset.
Okay.
And then the next screen, starting when Eric, Eric and I came about the same time. He was here a few months without me. It was hard for him, but then I came. So, so since then, we've been setting aside money for contingency. Per charter, we can put up to 10% of expenditures, general fund expenditures, into general fund contingency. So the first year, we put 200, and then you can see, so I'm proposing 290 because right now our, that's 10% of our expenditures roughly. Once that 290 goes in, we will be right at a million in our contingency, which sounds like a lot of money, but it can, you know, yeah. So, but, you know, that is a good thing that we're, we're putting in there, but that is something that if we ever needed to, we could either dip into, or we could reduce what we put in. I'm not recommending that. I'm just saying that's an option. Okay, any questions? So the next page, or the next slide, this is just a slide showing the history of the replacement fund since we came. When I came in '20, there was a little bit in there, 7,700 of it. I, it didn't have any history on it, so that's unallocated. And then you can see the additions, or the red, the, the spent out of there coming up to now. So that is where our replacement fund sits right now. There was no intentional saving into replacement until Eric came. But we are trying, we do know it's underfunded. We do know it's a drop in the bucket, but my opinion is that this is not the year to start increasing that, just because our budget is so tight. Any questions on that?
Trish, the 142 of 4768, the fund balance now?
Right now, yes. Okay, the next one is our expenditures in general fund broke down by department. Again, compare, you have the history and then comparison to, to budget for this current year, as well as spending through '630. And then the next page is the other financing sources and uses for the general fund. So this is where the transfers between funds show. This is where the 25,000 from CCPD shows. If we spend out of replacement fund, as you can see in fiscal year '22, money came into the general fund from replacement when we bought two vehicles. And then the bottom section is the function, is the transfer out. There is a transfer out there, 33652. We had two funds that were showing negative balances, and I went back as far as I could possibly go back, and the same negative balance had been carried for, for years. No reason why. I couldn't find anything. So I worked with the auditors, and they helped me do entries to clear that out. So that 33652 got transferred out of general fund to go into the, I have it later on the screen. I can't think of the name of the fund right now. Anyway, to zero it out, so it wouldn't be in there.
Just as a journal entry?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's where our contingency shows. That's where the transfers into replacement shows. And then we give by 1,000 to beautification to KRB. So that's where that shows. So as you can see, the bottom line, the total change expected in fund balance with this budget as it sits right now is $10,000 to the positive. That's the tightest budget I've ever, first year, I'm like, I don't want to go any closer than 300,000. This is not carved in stone. It is subject to change when the revenues are firmed up, when insurance rates come in. I'm constantly getting things coming in that, you know, firm up numbers.
So Trish, with the tightness of the budget, I mean, I'm not, it certainly won't get us to 300, but I noticed in your detailed budget, there's like credit card fees. So does that mean the city's absorbing that cost?
We will talk about that in the enterprise fund, but yes.
Okay.
They, we are, yeah. So that will be, that's one of my topics on, when we get to enterprise fund, because the majority of it is out of there.
Okay.
Okay. So moving on, the next slide is the other funds that we budget, showing their history and their expenditures for this year. With crime prevention, that was approved by the CCPD board. Court security and court technology, that, the revenues for that come from fees that are assessed on them, municipal court collections. We were, we were looking at it wrong before, and we found revenue that wasn't getting moved into it for the last two years.
We collected it, it just wasn't being moved.
It was collected. It was just sitting in general fund instead of in these funds. So we've corrected that. But so that's why the expenditure is higher. We were just, we were like, we're only getting 300, so you're only spending 300 last year, but it's really closer to like 5,000.
Okay.
And that 2,000 isn't for anything specific. It's just if something comes up, a computer goes out or something, Kirsten can use that for the courts without having to come to you guys and get permission.
The technology fund, fund?
Yeah, it can be used for anything for the court.
Okay.
The beautification fund budget is, is made by KRB. Technically... Technically, KRB has their own money. It's money that comes in off of utilities, voluntary donations. When I first came, they had their own bank account. They did their own thing. But we did our, some with them and that. So Kim Mayer and I met and it was decided that we would continue kind of managing that money for them. So it's in our pooled cash. We keep the books on it. We pay their bills and everything. But it could be a standalone. They could choose to, to take it out of the city. So I guide her on her budgeting, or not her now, but them. But it's really up to them, how they spend that money. Because it is donations to them that comes in. And then the transportation fund, they get money from sales tax as well as the transportation fee that's on the utility bills. So what we normally do is the transportation fee is for sidewalks, streets, or drainage. So we divide it into thirds. And then the sales tax is on the streets. So the streets portion of the transportation fee and the sales tax, we put in as an, as how much the streets will spend. We use it all up. We run it to a zero balance, you know. And then we put a third of that transportation fund in there. Cliff never spends it like that, but he can that way if something comes up. If it's not spent, it just adds to, to the fund balance. And then we'll get more into the water and sewer. Any questions? Okay. So like I said at the beginning, with a business-like entity, which is our enterprise fund, we don't run it for profit, but we run it as a business, more like a business than the general fund. So we have to set our rates to cover the service that we need to provide. We also need to have enough to cover our debt requirements. There's, I think, three different bond issues that are paid out of the enterprise fund, the biggest of which is the loan that, or the bonds that were sold for the Northwater plant. And then we also want to build some reserves for future needs. Since 2019, we've had a utility rate increase every year. We had a study done by Strand, a rate study, to determine what our rates would need to be to keep the enterprise fund sustainable. And so they gave us a five-year projection of rates with an increase every year. After that was done, last year BWA gave us a 12.5% increase. So I had to build that into their projection. This year, BWA has given us a 7.5% increase. That's our water cost from Versoria Water Authority. And then BRA is the Rassus River Authority. That's our sewer plant. They passed on a 10.89% increase to us this year. So those two percentages, I had to build into that rate structure that Strand had advised in 2019. And then we also this year signed a new contract with Waste Connections and that included an 8% increase. So all this means rates are going up. So we'll get to that in a minute. In 19, when they set the utility rates, they determined an amount that wouldn't be needed to raise $70,000 that would be put into an INI fund for sewer, right sewer? Infiltration and...
Inflow and infiltration.
That's it. Unfortunately, the person that did the calculation, not me, miscalculated and it only brings 34,000 into that fund a year instead of 70. And the 70 was what had been predicted to be needed in five years to do a major project. So that's a shortfall of 152,631 through this current fiscal year. That equates to 11971 per sewer account if we were to assess it right now, which I am not recommending we do that.
By per year, 11971?
A one year?
That would be to bring it up to where it was right now. If we, and then we would need to increase our sewer rates $2.36 to bring that up to 70,000 per year. Again, I'm not recommending that. I'm just giving you information. It's not included in the rates that I'm going to propose tonight.
The increase is not?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so the next slide is what I'm proposing for our rates. I have a box around fiscal year '24, but I have the history there for the three prior years. So this is what I'm proposing for our rates this year based, on both, that rate study we had done plus the unforeseen increases we've seen with the water and the sewer. And then the solid waste is based on the increase they passed on to us.
Aside from counsel, how many people receive water discounts?
I have a slide on that here pretty soon.
Okay.
The next slide is talking about tap fees. I went to a seminar in Austin this last spring. And one of the things they were saying, because every town is seeing a need to increase water rates and still struggling to keep their enterprise fund in the black. So they said what is really important is to dig in and, and find the leaks where you're leaking money. And one of those, they said, to look at is tap fees. So when a new structure is built, they have to have a water tap. If they're on sewer, a sewer tap. And we need to be charging at least what it costs us to have public work scrap and do that. It's been $575 for quite a long time. So I had Cliff calculate the cost of materials and then how many hours each type would be. And so you can see our cost and what I'm proposing as a fee. The reason the fee is higher is because I don't want to have to come back every time inflation rears its ugly head and, and raises it. Plus, there's some flexibility that way. This tap may take less time than this tap, you know. There, you know, of course, the labor is all estimate. So...
Do you know how the proposed fees compare to neighboring cities or cities of large size?
I've looked, they're higher than, I had it written down. I was going to bring it in here. I think Freeport's cheaper. CLUT's about the same. Lake Jackson's higher.
Okay.
So, and a lot of them, I couldn't find, a lot of them just said start at.
Okay.
And then amount. We, I actually had Laura contact all the cities around us by email and ask them for that information and we got no response. So...
But how many possible, I think we're, we're almost at that limit of being tapped out. And I know we picked up 10 potential houses at Magnolia.
Yeah.
Right? And then Oakwood Shores.
Yeah, there's Oakwood Shores. We'll have water taps for any new, new construction. We also have to plan though too. We have, how many acres over here that right now is not, you know, on the forecast to be developed, but it could be. Somebody could walk in tomorrow and say, I made a deal and I'm buying that and I'm building a subdivision. We have to have things in place.
With their own sewer plant and concrete road and water plant.
Well, and that's the thing is we're, we're a water plant.
Yeah.
You know, we're, every, every tap is getting us closer to needing a new one.
Yes, yes. So, and that, we'll get into impact fees a little bit. So anyway, we need to at least be sure we're covering our, our costs and, and...
This is residential, is commercial have these, because it could be a bigger tap, right? Or a bigger project? Or is that just depends on?
Yeah, it depends on, most of what we do is three-quarter inch, one inch. Rarely do we do anything over that. But if it goes up to two, the cost will increase accordingly.
I'm ignorant about this thing, so probably, and, you know, we're not approving these tonight, but these will be on a rate schedule that we bring with all the changed fees. And maybe we do need to do a commercial, something on there that commercials, you know, can be higher. Just a disclaimer.
It is something bigger. We're limited to what we can do. We don't have the boring machines, the equipment to do such, I know we've got two inch. So we're very limited to what we can, what we can do. Probably most everything that we can do is all within the question.
So on this slide, you can also see I put the history of how many we've done each year. And, you know, we do a lot more water because of Oakwood Shores. But you can see the drastic drop this year. Again, that goes back to the permits being down too. Another indicator that things aren't getting built.
On the water rates, how do the apartments, like do we bill each?
They pay, so they, like if they have 200 units, we take the base bill times 200. Like we have one that's a 214 unit, so they pay the base bill times 214. So for water, they, we would take...
But would they use a lot more water than?
Then it, they pay the...
The base bill.
We, we multiply that 2,000 that's included in the base bill times those units, that number of units too. And anything that goes over that, they're charged.
We have several that meet that.
Mm-hmm.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Good question though. Okay, any questions on that? So the next page, this is what Amanda was asking about.
I just wasn't paying and I'm sorry.
You were. Patience is a virtue. So the utility discounts we offer, we give seniors, if they're 65 or over, we give them a discount on their utility bills. It has been 750 since Eve and Adam started their utility account, I think. You know, it's been forever. 750 for water, 750 for sewer, and $2 on their trash bill. Obviously, if that hasn't changed, it's not keeping up with the rates increasing or with their cost of living. But I'm showing you what it's, what that discount has cost us. And then all active firefighters and council members are given a discount equivalent to the base bill for sewer and water. So there's currently, I think this is what you were asking, Amanda, there's nine active firefighters that receive both water and sewer discount. And the total for, based on the, the rates that I've proposed, the cost would be $7,131.24. And then there's currently six council members that receive a water discount and three that receive the sewer discount. So that total discount for fiscal year '24 will be $3,728.16.
Nearly $11,000.
Mm-hmm.
In discounts.
Any questions on that? Now you do all pay if you go over the usage.
Right.
It's just the base bill.
This is the base bill. And am I understanding the chart correctly? The 50,636, that is the total amount of discounts provided to senior citizens. Okay.
Yes. So about 61,000 in discount? Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, because it used to be like 100 and something.
Did you have a question?
Oh, no, I was just...
I'll have to, I don't ever look at the invoice.
If you aren't good, man. Okay, and then...
One quick question.
Yes.
So all the apartments, which base bill are they getting? They're paying the 26.29 times how many units, right?
So right now, as we sit here today, if, if there is a, I'm just going to do this because it's easy and I have a 10-unit apartment, but we don't have one. But so their water bill is $349.10. Their sewer bill is $262.90.
Okay, gotcha.
And then if they use over 20,000 gallons, because that's multiple of 10, then it's a per thousand increase tiered. Makes sense?
Yep.
Any other questions? And then the other thing Amanda asked about, credit card fees. So currently, we cover all credit card fees for anyone using a credit card to pay anything other than court. Court charges a fee to cover the cost.
Because it's done through the government site?
We use a different biller.
Okay.
So we have, we get two deductions every month in our bank account. One is from Express Bill Pay, who is the online payments site. If any of you pay online, that's where you go. They charge us a flat amount per type of transaction, whether it be a credit card, a check, online check, you know, whatever. And then they charge so much for returns and, you know, whatever the category is. We have a flat amount. But then Chase Bank processes the actual transactions and they charge us a percentage. They vary depending on the card, but they average right around 2%, right under. Use of credit cards is increasing. Dollar amounts are increasing. And right now, we're paying for all of it. So in, I have two years down there, fiscal '21 and '22, you can see what those costs were. And then '23, it's looking like it's going to come in over 18,000. And next year it'll be closer to 20. That's a lot of money. I am a big proponent of the people that use the service should be the ones paying for it, not everybody. So the people that walk in here and pay cash, that cost for everybody taking a credit card is built into, you know, what they're paying. So 95% of our transactions are attributable to the enterprise fund and 5% to the general fund excluding court. And so I calculated that if we charged every credit card transaction a 2.5% fee, that would cover it. We wouldn't make money, but we wouldn't lose money. The mechanics of it, I have not delved into because I wasn't going to call Express Bill Pay and find out how we do this. I know we can do it. I just don't know how yet until, if you guys recommend it.
There is some laws against that with the credit card, well, not laws, but credit card processing rules on, on the charging of fees.
Right, but CLUT charges 3%.
The county does.
The county charges.
I think probably just the verbiage would be labeled a convenience fee. Like it's not really processing, it's a convenience.
Well, a lot of people do is they, they say that they're actually receive a cash discount.
Right.
But it's, I renewed these things just recently and it does say that in there that you can't...
So I would find out, I would investigate more.
Our city has two different charges for the court. Like you'll get your court charge and then it's a, whatever your fee is, it's two separate charges. One goes to the city, one goes to the...
It can be done, it just needs to go into the verbiage, it needs to be...
I have not even started working on the mechanics of it. I, all I've done is calculate what it's costing us and what we would need to collect to negate that expense, to, as I said earlier, plug that hole. And 2.5% would, you know, pretty much cover us. Any questions on any of...
They'll change it on you, by the way. You think you're doing 2.5 and then next thing you know, it's 3.5.
Well, we would, you know, we pride ourselves on being pretty transparent. So we would make sure that it's, it's well-known. But we had talked about even just a flat, like $5 or $2 or whatever. But then, you know, the lady down the corner that is going to have a garage sale, but she uses her debit card to buy her $5 garage sale permit, would be paying the same fee as the builder that is paying a $2,000 permit fee with his card. So I think the percentage is more...
That's what we pay.
It's more fair.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, next slide. So in 2019, Fries and Nichols, the firm of Fries and Nichols, they're an engineering firm, was hired by the city to do an impact fee study. Impact fees are fees that are charged on new construction to be put away into a reserve for infrastructure improvement. Basically, this new house is having an impact on our infrastructure, so you have to pay to help improve it down the road. We had to wait a year before we could start charging them. And we did that and then started charging them. In the state law, it has to be revisited every five years with another study done. So Cliff and I met with Kendall, I forget his last name, but from Fries and Nichols last week to talk to him. One thing I had, I had questioned is why do we have a sewer when we haven't, you know, it's all Oakwood Shores, they don't have sewer. But again, the answer is across the road if they would ever come in. But again, the answer is across the road, if they would ever come in. But so, this, we talked to Kendall and they're gonna focus more on the water. They're gonna do what's state mandated with the sewer, but nothing with our sewer plant's really changed. But our water plant has changed with the North Water Plant. So the study, we're saving about 30,000 on the study, but I'm not having to focus on sewer. So the quote, I have in here 90,000, it came in today, I didn't change my slide, but it's 87.5, pretty close. And that has to be done by law if we're gonna continue to collect these fees.
Keep in mind, council, that this is all predicated on future land use. This, that's really what this is, this is designed for, is to make sure that you capture these funds to help push you forward. That doesn't, it doesn't do anything for our current standing right now.
So as you see on the chart, what we've collected so far, we haven't broke even yet from the first study. But you have to take into account two, that was COVID.
And we had to wait a year.
And we had to wait a year. Yeah, and we had to wait a year. So going forward, I don't know how many lots are left on in Oakwood Shores. 150, 200?
Too much to build a facility.
And so, you know, we'll be collecting on those. If something happens across the way, we, we don't wanna say, oh, we wish we would've kept that going, you know? We need to have it there. So this 90,000 or 87.5 can come out of general fund, I mean enterprise fund. It could also come out of the Fund 32 where the impact fees have been going. We could put, we could take the money we've collected and spend it on a new fee, or a new study. So right now, I, I have it just in the enterprise fund. So we've collected the 94,454. Earlier, council had approved 37,000 being transferred out of that fund for temporary water storage when the South Water Plant was worked on. Otherwise, all the money is still in there. Any questions on that? Okay, so the next slide. This is the summary of revenues and expenditures for the enterprise fund with our expected change in net position of 31,000. Some things I wanna note on there is the 80,000 that's in there, or 90,000 that's in there for this impact study. And we're also now paying quite a bit for debt out of there from the North Water Plant. So that's why that bottom line looks a little closer to zero than it has in the last year. Okay. Now, also, when you look at that, because it's a business-like activity, we do depreciation within the enterprise fund. I don't have that in here. This is almost more like a cash flow statement because I do have our principal payments in here that don't affect fund balance, so they kind of wash. The next page is our expenditures by category. This is combining water and sewer and solid waste. So that's just to look at where we are with expenditures. And then the next slide is our debt that we pay plus our transfers out. So right now, within the enterprise fund, we are paying on a meter capital lease. This will be the last year, fiscal year '24, that's 73, almost $74,000. This will be the last year we pay it, but the meter should last us another 10 years. It was a 10-year contract, but they have a life of 20, so. So next year, I'll be telling you, we need to put that money aside. We're paying on a 2011 bonds, 2004 bonds, and then the 219B bonds, that's the North Water Plant. And you can see 267,000 will go out for that debt. The transfer to INI is that 34,000 that was supposed to be 70. And the transfer to capital improvements, when I first came, we had just a couple payments left on a loan at the bank for something that enterprise fund had bought. It was 22,000 a year that was being paid. So Cliff asked when that was paid off, if we could just continue paying that money and put it into a reserve. So that's going into the capital improvement fund. As I said, the meter lease '24 will be the last year, we have to spend 74,000. 2004 series will be paid off at the end of fiscal year '25. And 2011 will be retired after fiscal year '31. So we are seeing a little light at the tunnel for some of our debt. Any questions on that? And then the last slide, this is our fund balance. Fund balance is adjusted at the, at the year end. So anything expenditures, revenue over expenditures is added or taken away from fund balance at end year, year end. So these were the figures per audit that were in the audit last year. Since then, we've transferred 280,000 to contingency. We have, in the current budget, a transfer of up to 575 from general fund fund balance, which was gonna be streets and then it became equipment. So that's still in there to be done. I haven't transferred it yet till we have the exact amounts. The transportation fund, we discussed how we were gonna use the remaining bond monies that were left at the end of the projects from the bond. And we had, I think it was before a couple of you were on here, to use that money effectively, we had to take some transportation fund balance to put with it to, to make the projects worthwhile. So transportation fund balance at the end of the year will be down to just about nothing. But it builds back up with sales tax and transportation fees. As I mentioned earlier, I did some transfers to get rid of some negative accounts or negative funds. One of them was included in this other minor funds up here, and the other one is down utility contingency. And you see the amounts. So the 33,719 came out of general fund and went into, I can't remember what that fund was, to zero it out. And then, I think it was general fund capital improvements. And then the 69,979 was transferred out of enterprise fund to zero that fund out. And again, that was per auditors. And then, the utility capital improvements, it shows a $503,000 balance. Since then, 37 has, was transferred to, from that fund to water and sewer for the South Water Plant temporary storage. But that's the fund where the 34,000 goes in. And that is, that's all I've got for you. I will take any recommendations on some of those things we talked about or just discussion or questions?
I don't know about the rest of y'all, but I think the credit card fees is a definite no-brainer.
Yeah, and we discussed this, I think, what, three, three years ago or so? And it was, it was a hot topic then and just I think it kind of fell to the cracks. But definitely, I mean, it's, we gotta, we gotta charge something.
And I have that built in, because I was pretty sure you guys would go for it.
Oh, yeah. That's about $18,000 a year.
I, I budgeted 20 for this coming year, 1,019.
It's 18 to enterprise and about 1,000 to general fund.
Yeah, it's definitely a no-brainer.
So tonight, you know, we don't vote on anything, but I will take the consensus of you and build these things into what we'll present. I wanna come back in August and present the rate schedule for approval. Because if that's not approved, then the whole budget is off. Because I've built it on the proposed rates and-
Yeah, would you do me a favor, make sure that is a, a good rate, that 2.5%?
Yeah. What I'm, what my plan is, that's what I calculated out. But once I get kind of the consensus, which I feel I have, then I will call Express Bill Pay, find out how to do it, go over it again, and, and work out all the specifics. So it may change, I just, I don't think we need to make money on it, I just wanna- That 2.5 is kind of for your information, just that's what I'm calculating right now based on my projections.
I think with communication, you know, some people might be willing to just pay a check.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And the online credit card vendor, because, I mean, I'm set up on auto pay, so I don't have the time, I don't even know what the bill is. But is there an option for an online check? Because a lot of times if you do-
And that's cheaper for us.
It's less expensive, but there is still a fee, I believe.
Yeah, Amanda told me there was some kind of fee that they, so I need to, like I said, I have not dug in to that. I just wanted to get the general consensus that you guys are okay with us doing something to get that covered.
I think this, I think, council, this, this was kind of the year that we, you know, we talked about going through operation, letting it run, figuring out where, where those were, redoing the replacement funds, make sure we're feeding those contingency funds, make sure we, and now we're down into the revenue streams and looking at to make sure that we're, again, not profitizing, but we're not losing. And, and I, and I think we pointed out some areas tonight that, albeit, you know, significant in, in the overall scope of the budget, there's still leaks. And, and there's still things that other municipalities are capturing and we're not. And, and I think we, we need to, I think Trish hit it best, let, let other people pay their fee.
And I, oh, I'm sorry. I, I'm not saying I found all the leaks. I, I've dug into a lot. As I look at other cities, I may go, oh, look what they do, you know? I've looked at a lot of cities, but, you know, there may be more. And if any of you know of anything that you wonder if it's a leak. And, and I say leak, you know, I don't think the senior discount, I don't really consider that a leak per se. I do think we need to take care of our, our elderly. And maybe it needs to increase. This is just discussion, not recommendation. But-
So what about insurance? That's gone up quite a bit. Can we look at, what are we insuring? Do we need to be insuring everything that we're insuring kind of at the same rates and stuff like that?
We did, we did an audit, basically every, every year when you sign up for the insurance, you, you have the auditors come out, they look at your buildings, look at your properties. But we did a really in-depth, almost a line item by line item last year. And we found we were underinsured. And we found things that were not, should've been covered that weren't covered. So it's kind of a catch-22, we found some things, but they, they weren't in our favor. So we're one year off from that. The only new properties that we have since then is the, the new water plant, North Water Plant, when, when it goes online, and a couple new pieces of equipment. But we, when we get those, we automatically insure those, so. It's a good point, but yeah, it actually found some deficiencies. It'd been a while since we'd done that.
I mean, if, if things keep going well for the city and our contingency bills and, you know, we have all kinds of money in reserve, we can look at self-insure, you know, just kind of run the, run the gambit. But we are not at that point at this time. Right now, if we had a devastating storm, we can't, we can't replace. So it's-
That's something I do a lot. Often, I, I'd heard about this one city paying $10,000 a year to, to insure just a, a brick building. And it's like, the building's not even worth $10,000, but yeah.
And we do also do what's called a buyback. We pay a percentage of the premium to reduce our deductible. And, and that has paid off in the past because it, it's a sizable savings for not that much money when you're looking at the premium.
Do we do premium finance or you just, we pay the premium?
We pay the premium. Yeah, so the windstorm was due June 1st. So we paid that. Unfortunately, you know, we get that toward the end of budget year. And they don't even give us prices till just days before it's due. And then the general liability in automotive and that will be due October 1st. But we won't probably get, we may not even get those rates in time for the budget to be approved. You know, because it runs pretty tight. I don't think I had them last year, so.
Another thing that I am well aware might be much more controversial, but the discounts, it's a, it's a pretty significant amount of money, 11,000. I'm not talking about the senior discounts, but 11,000 is a pretty decent chunk. Any discussion on that from, from y'all?
It's the reason I signed up.
Is that why you wanted free water and sewer?
Sewer already free. We already gave you that.
I mean, I realize that our utility bills are high. Unfortunately, they have to be to cover, you know, when you look at an enterprise fund with a projected net gain and the fund balance of 31,000, we're not overcharging on our utilities. But we are one of the higher cities in the area. And so, you know, I hate-
And we can drink our water. We can drink our water.
Exactly. And so, you know, we're paying a lot of money out for debt. We're paying, you know, increases that we have no say over from BWA and BRA. You know, Cliff runs on a skeleton crew. I was honestly hoping when I put these numbers together, I could add another employee for him. He, when he had three people out of his six-man department or whatever, eight-man department, you know, they were running themselves ragged. I mean, they are short-staffed. So I was really hoping it would be a better picture. The enterprise fund is more definite in the bottom line than the general fund because I don't have firm numbers on tax and sales tax and that. But the enterprise fund is pretty much carved in stone. I mean, we grow maybe 2% a year, and I build that in. But, you know, it's, it's not like the county's gonna call and say, oh, you way undervalued your utility income. That's not gonna happen. But they, they could say that about my ad, ad form. But, but yeah, I mean, 11,000 a discount is a lot of money.
I don't even know, add one. I, I don't think I'm getting it.
I was unaware as well until they mentioned it, I was like, no, I still pay the water.
I tried, I missed you, it's on your name, but-
I just feel like if we're, you know, everybody is impacted by inflation and our budget is impacted by inflation.
Fiscal responsibility.
You're gonna drink an extra bottle of water today.
Well, and employees are not given a discount if they live in the city.
Right. That's my two cents.
Yeah, I mean, it's getting down to where-
Well, I think, I think, I mean, the caveat on that, the biggest increases that we saw in expenditures are sewer and water, right? And we, we talked about, BWA gave us a 7.85% increase. And then BRA with our sewer is a 10.89%. And I kind of crunched the numbers on the proposed, you know, what we paid in 2023 to 2024. And BWA, we're not even covering it, we're, we're averaging a 7.5%. So we're, we're lower than what they're charging us. On our, these are proposed, I know they're proposed.
We, all of our water doesn't come from them.
Right.
So that's-
But I'm just punching it off of these rates right here. And then BRA as well is a 10.89%. And based off of all the other ones and proposed increases, it's 8.15%. So then we're, we're lower. And I know it sucks because residents, I hear, see it all the time, like, oh, our water rates are going up, our sewer. Well, the city's not, we're just trying to cover our costs. So I, I know it's gonna be a tough thing to, to present and sell, but we gotta be able to cover, you know, what we're being charged as a city. We're not trying to make money and pay for a city jet here, but if, if our percentage is lower than what we're- but if, if our percentage is lower than what we're being charged, I think we, we need to go with the water.
I, I think we're still paying for the sins of our fathers in a way, you know? The utility fund was run in the red for a while, or they didn't even know really what they had.
Because we're recommending on sewer, the $2.36 a month per connection to help offset that 70K estimate.
I don't have that built into the fee.
Okay. But I think, you know, if, if that's what should have been, I, I think we should probably do that and then incorporate at least a 10.89% to offset our.
So ultimately, or pardon me one second, ultimately understanding the, the infrastructure, I and I by itself. Not any other thing but I and I. And I and I is so hard for us to understand a, as far as municipality goes because if we just disregard I and I, the city will still run, the, the toilets will still flush and, and on and on and on. So it's, it's always been kind of put to the side, put to the side, put to the side. But when we are where we are now as far as our flow rates going to the wastewater treatment plant, when, when there's such a disparity between the water you put out and the wastewater you put into the plant, and it keeps growing, that's the I and I, that's water leaking into our system, that in turn cost us twice. Because now we're processing more, even though we're 25% owner in that. So Rory's right in the fact that, eh, it's a tough pill, but we're gonna have to swallow it at some time. We'll keep throwing like mini darts at the dartboard. And, and we are funding it, and there's, there is money going to I and I fund, but what's the study gonna cost us?
Your budget's 70?
For the study.
Yeah, and, and the engineering review, the consultant.
Yeah. Any I and I project, you know, is gonna be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Well, and he thought collecting 70,000 for five years would pay for a project, and now it wouldn't.
It'll fund the study.
And, and one of your points, so I didn't raise sewer rates the full 10.9. I figured out how much it raised our total. It, it, it raised our, it, it equaled more like 5% of what it was doing to our full costs. So that's.
I was just.
Yeah, I was trying to.
I mean, and Cliff might be able to answer the, help answer this. I know BRA, yeah, we're 25% owners per se or usage of it, but they're starting to get at capacity as well at the sewer plant. So then, you know, our growth is stagnant. We can't, unless it's in Oakwood Shores that has septic, we can't grow as a city at all. So I'm in just future, you know, and obviously it's not any time here in my tenure here, but our future look down the road is how can we become sewer independent? And that's huge money.
Cliff said there was, you know, some talk of building our own water treatment plant. We're not in any shape to do that now, but that's where this money is supposed to be, you know? So I didn't include that $2.36 in my rate.
You better get it sooner than later because the, the water in general, just from what I learned at BWA, is not gonna go down.
No.
The more they keep building on 2.8 quarter.
And with the Harris reservoir expansion, we're gonna see more, another increase, so.
Well, we wanted the, we also wanted opportunity in this study, starting with the freezing nickels capital projects study. So we, we picked an area that we know is, is in force. And we want to look at the area and have it, have that data analyzed by the engineers. And we're gonna get an updated, pretty much per year foot of pipers to the sewer replacement. When we first started putting away back in 18, 19 for I and I, I'm sorry, for the year, also if I could present to council or the tangle project within five years, maybe that was gonna be 70,000. So that was a long time ago, a lot of things have changed. But this, this look will, will provide council more information on what that funding needs to be within that term of time you want to see over the front of the tangle site. So I don't know if you can bump it up to 70, but I will have more facts later on in this.
But it's not gonna be lower.
Yeah, it's not gonna be lower, we know that. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't want you guys to shoot from the hip, trying to get you more information to make the more experienced decision.
I will never forget the look on Cliff's face. I hadn't been here very long when I told him, oh, that only calculates out to about 34,000 instead of 70.
I almost cried. I was crushed.
It's calculated on a leap year.
Any idea what it's, sales tax revenue is?
Yeah, that's what.
I think it's just economy. I, my own pers, my own personal opinion is this is post-COVID. I feel like when people got released from their homes, they went crazy, and our sales tax skyrocketed everywhere.
So I was, I was gonna actually kind of bring that up. On the annualized basis for 2023, I mean, just, I'm assuming this is six and a half months' worth, where it's, it'd be about 677,000.
Are you on the slide or?
Just on the front page of the itemized.
This one.
It's a budget worksheet.
Because I'm just like trying to annualize it.
Yeah, what I did, I had seven months collected. So the first two months that we collect are actually prior year because we accrue it at the end of the year. We earn it two, two months before we get it. So at the, at year end, I accrue those two years that we, or two months that we collect in October, November. So when I prepared this, I had seven months. We were nine months into the year, but I had seven months of revenue and divided that by, I divided the total by seven, multiplied by.
So I looked at that and I'm thinking like, all right, what are the contributing factors on why your sales tax has gone down? And I could, just theorizing, I could probably say in my household of the four Amazon boxes that arrive daily to my front porch, the online sales and shopping is, is affecting us drastically.
And that's a post-COVID thing too, because we got used to that.
Yeah. But, so I went back and I started researching the state. And I know here, sitting in a little council seat in Richwood, Texas, it's not gonna, you know, there's a little peep. But Amazon charges a sales tax, right? But I think the state, it's a state tax. How is it getting down to the actual municipality that that Amazon package is being delivered to? That's, I mean, this is something that's, obviously, we're in Richwood, small, but the big picture is online shopping is gonna continue. How can we get sales tax revenue down to the city municipality?
Supposedly, they're supposed to find the tax rate for the address that it's delivered to.
Right.
And it gets divided, the state gets their portion, we get our portion.
Yeah, the state gets six and a quarter, and then.
And so when we get our deposit, that's supposed to all be included in there.
Because we're bedroom community, right? And that's what we tout ourselves on. So our, I'm sure our online shopping presence is, is pretty heavy compared to a.
So suppose, they're supposed to be doing that. I get a report every quarter that's this thick. That means absolutely nothing to me because it has every person's name or something with some figures after it. It's not how much they spent, it's not how much they gave me in sales tax. It's just a conglomeration of, I can't figure it out, I've tried. I don't get like, how much did Roadster pay in sales tax? Or McCoy's or Yaklin? I don't get that information. So I don't know the source of the money that comes.
Every, every so often, and we participated in this when I first got here, is there's a, there's several agencies or groups that, that do this that, for a percentage of the fee collected, will go out and, and find unrealized gains that way. And, and we did that the first year I was here. It was nominal, but I had gone back and looked over their history here in Richwood, and I think the first year they did it was $20,000 or $30,000. I, I don't quote, we verbatim, but it was pretty significant. And then it dwindles down, and it may be time to visit that again, and.
Yeah, what's the cost of the service?
You pay them a percentage of what they save you, what they find.
What they, what they collect.
So if they find 20,000 and their fee is 20%, then you give them the five or.
Yeah.
Percentage is pretty substantial.
Yeah. But it's, it's work that we can't do.
Because they find it.
I was just curious on how that works for online sales because, you know, if there was a brick and mortar Amazon store than the city of Richwood, we'd be getting that sales tax revenue indirectly.
But generally, you enter a zip code from that?
It's supposed to be coming to us.
But then how does the controller's office get it to us?
Get it to us.
Right, but I, I don't. And, and so honestly, I, I assume, because I know.
Well, the odds, it's not.
Other places I've worked, we had to.
Maybe that's how our rainy day fund is so big.
You know, we, other places I've worked, we had to account for tax rates where the end product is going. And so I assume Amazon has to file sales tax reports with the state that has all the jurisdictions.
So figure out what Rory's buying.
Yeah.
Make sure it's not going to Angleton.
Mine's Angleton too, yeah.
But you know, you look at our.
We have three zip codes in our city, so it's a, it's a good point.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, that is something maybe we should look into.
The other house, Audubon, is legit.
But I think we all got used to online sales, and not all of them do you pay tax to. You know, so on your tax return, you know, there's always a question, did you make purchases that you didn't pay sales tax on and?
Well, I gotta wonder, is it, is a lot of it going to Clute? Because with that zip code.
It could be.
Most of it pulls up as Clute.
And I think that's the first like audit that we had done, like prior to Eric being here. And they did find a good chunk, but they, they then contacted the controller and then they correct that. So when we did it again, when he first came, they did not find as much because it had been corrected.
Because I mean, it's probably like to go down.
Not a bad idea to maybe look into it again to see if maybe there's some that's missing.
We'll bring, we'll bring that back up.
I was just curious.
It's just whether, I mean, yeah, that's a good question. I don't think we're gonna.
Not gonna find the 15 million for sewer.
You never know.
And if you've already paid it out to the other cities.
And if you, if you look at that little chart that.
It was five Powerball tickets and.
I don't know. I took this chart, this one here, off of the MAC site, which is where you can go. It's municipal advisory council. We're still overall higher than we were a couple of years ago. This chart is information for '22. They don't make a new chart till the year's over. But I mean, we're still higher than we were pre-COVID. It's just we're not where we wish, you know, we kept going up. And every budget year, I was projecting more than we had this year. This year I had to go down.
Okay, so where did we land on the increase in the discounts?
So I was kind of thinking we could like, some of the things I wanted to ask you guys to kind of give me feedback on, maybe I could just kind of, one of them would be the discounts.
I mean, I have a, I have a really hard time asking residents to, a lot of them are probably already strapped for cash because of inflation, to pay an increased fee while I sit back and receive a pretty significant discount on the same service.
Yeah. I, I will tell you, I put out, I belong to a blog that's GFOA, Government Finance Officers. And so I just put out a question. Do any of you give discounts to your councilmen or to your volunteer fire department? And I probably got half a dozen answers. All of them were a definite no. Some said it was misappropriation, some said it was unethical. I didn't get anybody that said yes.
Okay.
Six answers, you know, but. And I'm not recommending one way or another. I'm just trying to give you guys the information.
Yeah.
I'm okay with doing away with it. I agree with what Amanda says.
I haven't, I haven't got it.
Rory, you know.
I donated mine.
Sure, I'll get my discount. I mean, it's.
Ultimately, it doesn't, the nice thing is it doesn't make or break this budget.
No.
No, it doesn't. Well, it's just the, the principle of the matter. Hey, residents, we're gonna raise your rate, but I'm getting my discount, you know?
Well, everybody but.
Everybody but Rory. And Rory, if we miss you, we're not paying you back.
Oh, no, no, I, I'm gonna donate it to Palatour.
So, I'm trying to find that page. Okay, so I, I gave you three different discounts. Well, two.
Oh, I want to be clear, it's for the volunteer positions, not the senior citizens that I'm proposing to remove.
Okay, and both firefighter and council?
Yes.
So do we, I mean, I feel like I'm play mayor, but I don't wanna build something into the budget that I don't.
We would have to put that as an agenda for the next council meeting.
It would be addressed next month when we do a fee schedule amendment.
Okay.
But I just kind of want to know.
Yeah, I thought this was just like just session on for her to rework the numbers.
So we'll present an ordinance that amends the fee schedule, and that would be removed effective August.
I would, I would say to keep the firefighters. I mean, they, they volunteered to do that, and we're not putting our life and limb in, in danger and every, all hours of the night. I mean, a, a small discount for their water bill, I think, would be something good for them.
I agree with you. They also get a pension.
I don't know.
Yeah, yes.
Oh, do you pay?
Yeah.
We get one for council members?
No. We have, we have term limits.
By the time you qualify for a pension, we boot y'all.
At your disposal.
I guess it's at a fuel right now.
Actually, it says no one, 50.
So do you guys want me to just do council? Do you want me to do both? I, I, I know you guys can change your mind before you vote on it. I just want to know, I want guidance for how I adjust.
Start with council for now and work from there.
I get the feeling it's gonna be accepted, so. Or, or what she's saying about the, I, I can't speak for everybody, but I kind of get the feeling that.
So everybody's okay if we just take the council off of the discount?
My yard's dying.
My yard's dead.
If you guys get hungry, we always have snacks here.
We have a water.
We got a hundred dollars.
Credit card fees.
So.
The discounts for.
Yeah, credit card fees. Is it okay for me to go ahead and pursue that?
Well, yeah, for sure. They don't have 2.5%.
Yeah. And again, that'll be voted on, but it'll, because it'll be part of our rate structure. I just want guidance.
Any, what about like permit costs and all that? I mean, didn't y'all recently adjust all those?
Yes, but what, what we're bringing back now is the other end of that, which is the impact fee stuff, which we, we really need to visit that because that's where, we need to stay on top of that.
Yeah, the impact fees will probably go up with the study. The permit fees, we looked at those some last year.
Last year.
We also, there were just things that had slipped through the cracks. There's a $50 processing fee on each permit that wasn't being charged. It had just kind of slipped through the crack. We're charging that now. And then, you know, if they're paying for their own credit card usage, that'll help a lot too, just because, you know, we're paying 2% or 2.5% of their permit if they use their card. But we did look at that some last year. We also looked at usage of our properties, you know, the building and the pavilion and stuff. We raised those rates last year.
And I'll probably bring back filing fees with the rate next month. I know we did replats to catch up with the costs. I have to pay the county to do it, and we were way undercharging with that.
And there may be, as I keep going, I mean, I'm not done with the budget by any means. I may find more things that I'll bring back in August that we'll discuss, but this is what I've, what I've found right now.
What about citation amounts? Is that like a standardized fee that the state recommends? Or do we have room to?
The penal code or the private code, they each have like a minimum and max fine amount.
Okay.
Judge, our judge sets every charge in our computer system as the max fine amount. And then when he sees defendants, then he can, he has the ability to lower them. But generally, since we only have a judge here once a week, everything's handled with a clerk at the court window, and it's the max fine amount that's allowed.
Okay.
And those, that's increased if you look at the court income. You know, that really took a dive during COVID too.
People weren't drunk.[1764.27] People weren't driving.
And, you know, the police weren't as actively stopping vehicles either.
Minimizing contact.
You know, um so that's increased.
And then every two years, legislation meets to amend court costs, which portions of that we do get to keep, but most of that goes to the state, the fine amount we keep. So we're maxed out on everything right now.
Yeah. So, um so yeah, it's not like, you know, when you're in a private business, you can figure up another doohickey to sell or something, but we're kind of stuck with what we can do. Um and so.
There's some substantial increases on, on the proposed budget. I'm just kind of curious, like where did the?
Can you give me a specific line?
Okay, like um I'm on page six.
Page six?
Yeah. I just picked one up, you know, just kind of sort of my biggest increase where gas, oil and lubricants in twenty twenty were eighteen hundred dollars and then it, it's gone all the way up to ten thousand dollars a year.
Well, gas went from, you know, you could find it under two dollars a gallon to there for a while it was over four. That's one of the ones I calculate. I take the um average over the past year to come up with a new monthly average and that's what goes in.
Okay, so that's the average. So, so we're driving a lot more. Is it just mostly gas basically what we're talking about? Like fuel for the, for this particular.
Yeah, oil changes and that kind of thing that can go in there too.
Mike, are you talking about uh?
So.
Five, five, two, three, zero on the far left hand.
Zero, two, five, two, three, zero.
Okay, if you look at the year prior, twenty twenty-two, forty-four thousand, two eighty-one is our actual expense.
Well, I'm seeing, I'm, I might be looking at the, a different line.
So a good one to look at for gas.
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah, yeah. Page six.
He's on city maintenance, city maintenance department.
I'm just picking one out, you know, where you see this, this really big rise and it's like just kind of sticks out of.
So we budgeted twenty-seven hundred this year. Um our actual through the end of June is three thousand four hundred and thirty.
Are we on the same line item?
Go to the over budget first.
No, the next one.
We budgeted fifty-five hundred and our actual at sixty-seven fifty-eight, so we are already over budget.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was off a line.
Yeah, we're over budget right now.
Yeah, so we budgeted fifty-five, um and we're at sixty-seven fifty-eight. Um that's purely gas prices. When I set the budget last year, they had a, they went up after and I had allowed for an increase at the time too. And one thing too, um and so then, now this year, when I averaged out this year, it came out to ten thousand.
It just seems like in my mind, twenty twenty was yesterday. It's flown by.
Yeah. Yeah, but gas prices tripled, quadrupled. Um we also had COVID. There wasn't as much driving. But the way I do the gas, oil and lubricants is just strictly taking the average and multiplying it out. And, you know, that brings a question, brings a comment up um for you that haven't been here at year end. When I look at the budget, we have to stay within budget per fund. Okay, so line items don't necessarily bother me if they're over as long as, well, I look at department. You know, if this department is way over, I'll look why. Um but by law, we have to stay within budget by fund. Um at the end of the year, I will, toward the end of the year, I will go through and I'll look at things that are blatantly over on the line or by department or by fund and I'll figure out why. And then I'll bring a budget amendment to you guys before I close out the year. Because I cannot take a budget to audit that has not been amended to the, I can't take an over budget finances to audit. Um so things like that, you know, I will find and, or unexpected repairs. You know, we may go ahead and do them without getting your approval. And I know it sounds a little backwards. Do it and then, you know, do it and then ask for forgiveness, you know? Um but that's the, the best way to do it is to bring a budget amendment at the end of the year with anything that's way over expended so that you guys.
Just from us doing the budgeting, if you look at that increase, you can also see the bottom line. We brought that department in general, city maintenance, is under what we budgeted for last year. So while we increased gas.
Well, that's because we had a hundred and forty thousand dollars in equipment that we bought. That's a big.
But we tried to cut in other places when we saw increases in line items. We went to other places and tried to cut as much as we could.
But so, um so I'm constantly looking at those things that go over, but at the end of the year is when they'll be brought to you guys. It's not so much asking permission, but saying, okay, we're aware. And you, each one that I bring to you, there will be justification behind. It won't be, hey, we went and had a party and now this line's over.
No, I wouldn't.
Yeah, it's um, you know, gas went way higher than we originally budgeted. I need that budget amendment, so. Now, as you guys look at this, I'm happy to answer any questions tonight or, you know, whenever.
Sometimes when I look at budgets, I'll usually have like percentage of revenue next to it or percentage of increase over the year. It's kind of makes easier.
The budget reports that I give will have a percentage of budget that was, the percentage that's spent of budget next to it.
Yeah.
Again, you know, because it's a, it's a different kind of accounting than a business accounting. It's not really based on percentages of revenues and things, but.
Right. It's, it's just nice to look at.
Yeah, but the budget reports that you get every month have that, have the percentage of total budgeted.
When you look at your, the city health insurance, are you already checked all that?
When did that come in? Just last month?
That's, that's.
Yeah, that's the increase of a hundred per employee per month.
Yeah, we just got it last month.
We go through like a broker like that with the regular insurance?
T M L, T M L uses Blue Cross. We'd use T M L.
But I mean, like, you know, dropping around.
We could go to another one.
No, T M L only goes to, T M L uses Blue Cross.
But, but we wouldn't have to go to T M L. Um in the past, they've looked at other things and they weren't.
And we're, so we did this last year. We talked to our insurance broker and they recommended we put each employee in the marketplace. So each employee would have to go basically to the marketplace and then we would just give them a stipend to pay for their own insurance. And it was just, it wasn't the coverage that the employees were used to getting and I just didn't feel comfortable with it. The size of our business is just not conducive to somebody wanting to give us.
We're too small to get really good rates.
Yeah.
Not that there's any really good rates out there, but.
It's just the size of us. They're just not wanting to take it on.
Yeah, I forgot that was what the response was.
You wanted to put employees in the marketplace based on their age and their need and.
And everybody would have been up to them to find their own. Um we, you know, we, we wouldn't be able to require that they have health insurance was one of the things I remember thinking, you know, can we require, if we're paying, if we're reimbursing them for getting on the marketplace, can we require that they have health insurance? Because if they don't have health insurance, that affects us as their employer too. Or if they don't have as good a health insurance, so they, you know, because, you know, it's just, it's this way, we know they have good coverage. We know they're getting taken care of and we know they're basically healthy. Anything else? Well, feel free to reach out if you have, if you see something that doesn't look right to you.
So, well, I probably can't ask that. I'm trying to, well, let me ask you if I can ask the question. On twenty twenty-three, we got two hundred and sixty-eight in salary on administration. The proposal is uh three hundred and ninety-three.
Where are you, you're on salaries for administration?
Yeah, page two.
Okay, the proposed is three hundred and ninety-three.
I guess, I guess the question, the question.
Oh, you're looking at the one ninety?
Well, the actual for twenty twenty-three.
So. You have to remember we're two months behind.
I'm sorry, you're right, you're right.
So that's only what we have.
You gotta annualize it.
Well, and, and I think you mentioned the one ninety back in twenty.
Mm-hmm.
Before I came here, finance was its own department. Um what is now admin was like three different departments and it was ridiculous because it was like I would be the department of one.
It would have their own training, their own travel.
It was, and so we merged.
So we merged departments, that, that explains it.
Yeah.
That cost came off somewhere.
And so it doesn't necessarily show in the history because that, those departments aren't showing on the history.
We took, we, Mike, we took, we took.
Sounds a brain fart.
We took the, the, the old horizontal.
Like what year is it?
And went, went back vertical again. It's easier for us to keep track of that way.
Well, it's crazy when you try to divvy out.
One third of the power bill.
So anyway.
And we also, that probably includes the code inspector as well, right?
Yes.
Yeah, he's not on there.
Well, the code enforcement has his own department.
These are separate?
Yes, we have its own.
He's down past fire.
It's ten oh nine. So it's a forty-nine, four, two, twenty-nine.
Because we did have um just some costs that were going there that were separate because Lori was doing it. Her salary was going to judicial, but we had some costs that went to code enforcement. So it kept, we kept that department. And it's nice now because we can see, since it's a new employee, can you see what the effect is?
For a true cost.
I think that was all the things I really wanted you guys to weigh in on. Some things we just don't have a whole lot of choices. Got any more questions? I'm done.
Thank you, Trish.
Thank you for all of the.
Great job, by the way. Thank you so much.
Cliff has nothing for us, other than what you added?
No.
Okay.
I don't know anything.
Okay. Mr. Challenger, you have anything to add?
Um.
Mr. Riddle?
Yeah.
Mr. Colante, anything to add?
It's hot.
Yeah, it's still hot.
I'm good.
Okay. I have nothing else to add other than agreeing with y'all about that. And I appreciate you digging into this. I'm sure we'll have some changes to go forth.
Yes.
Are we in the right direction?
It's not a completed project.
I think we're on the right track. I think everybody can agree with that. Uh future agenda items from what we discussed. I think that's all we have. No other business to address. The time is now seven fifty-six and this meeting is adjourned.